Thank you so much. Good afternoon and welcome to this special meeting of the Akron Public School Board of Education for Monday, July 20, 2020.
Dr. Akbar?
Patrick, we're having trouble hearing you. You're at roll call, so.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. We're having trouble hearing you.
I'm here.
And it's definitely a roll call, so.
I have to feedback too. Uh, just. Dr. Akbar?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
President.
Ms. Autry?
Present.
Mr. Bravo?
Here.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if everyone could mute, uh, we will do the pledge of allegiance now if you would join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Uh, again, welcome to everyone and thank you for joining us. This is, uh, was originally scheduled as a finance committee meeting, uh, so that we could continue our discussions on district finances and, uh, potential for the need for a levy, uh, for the 2020 year. Um, we are going to combine that with our continued discussion on the reopening plan. So again, we appreciate all of you taking time out of your afternoon to join us. Uh, Mr. Pendleton, I'm going to turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you and good evening. Uh, thanks for noticing this meeting as a special. Uh, this is one of the more important discussions we have in terms of finance and, uh, a point in time after some pretty, uh, unprecedented events. At least in my tenure, I'm sure yours. And then a reflection on those finances puts us in a position to all brainstorm about what are the potential options? What options do we have? How do we respond? How do we reopen? And quite frankly, before I get into this brief presentation, I found myself, um, kind of getting lost in some of those questions myself. And really had to come out, look at a 30,000 foot perspective and just remind myself that no matter COVID or pandemic or virtual or in person or some sort of blended return to school, the district is nearing the end of its levy cycle. And I'm going to bring up the presentation now, go through a short presentation, but really the feedback of individuals that I've talked to so far and tonight is the important part. So I really welcome your questions and discussion. All right, I'm going to bring up the presentation. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Well, in finance committee, obviously, as with any other of the return to school committees, uh, we all have the same values. And I thought it was really important for us to list those values and that's, uh, all of us in the entire system and community take great pride in our educational programming. Uh, and we take pride in reaching all students. We know to do that, especially in today's, uh, global pandemic, we need that's, we need students, families, teachers and staff to feel protected and safe. But this unique circumstance that we're in, again, complicates finance more than I have ever seen in my career. And now even some of the questions that we were talking to around scrimmage today, we don't have answers for, but I think it's really important that we explore all of them. So I wrote the report, again, kind of frustrated or stumbling along as I prepared this report, that I, I wrote this in the way that I was talking about it this weekend and I needed to say it out loud. Point one, regardless of any, uh, global pandemic and the impact that it has on Akron Public Schools, we're at the end of our cycle for new money. On average, we go back to the ballot about every six years. It's been eight. This is definitely a unique circumstance before we consider placing additional money on the ballot, but we are in need of additional revenue. There's lots of different impacts that we can talk and causes for that, but that's our cycle. And then under that point, regardless of the financial impact, we will have to consider budget reductions if we don't pass additional money soon. So we, we want to talk through some of those realities tonight. And then point two is really the start, if not, maybe we're in the middle of the conversation on reopening, as I know, district leaders, board, bargaining groups are all grappling with the amount of information coming to you to make the appropriate decisions about how to reopen. And we will be there for you. We will be ready, uh, to be nimble enough to modify our budget to serve. Point two is in light of the COVID-19 funding discussions for public schools are much more complicated. And then framing these questions, hopefully we can talk through a little bit tonight. The report contents is a quick financial summary about where we've been just since last November, what our books close to be, and we've invited the return to school finance, the federal and state grants committee to the meeting tonight. So they could see, they've been tracking this with me, uh, over our few weeks and months. We're going to talk about levy modeling. We're going to pick a specific millage just so that you can see the impact of that. And then the start of a frequently asked questions, hopefully that you can add to tonight. So we'll start with the November 2019 forecast as adopted by the board. And I've circled some numbers here really to identify trends and to talk about some of those takeaways. And I would, I would like you to look at two lines on each one of these forecasts. The revenue surplus or deficit line. So that's in a sense, are we balancing the budget? Are we deficit spending? Are we adding or subtracting to our cash balance? And then the circled ending cash balance with levies. Last line item, you can see in November, we were predicting to close this fiscal year at around $60 million and out in 2024 minus 50. And this is, uh, we're cash accounting, so there's no set aside, there's no other pots of money that fund our general operations. This is it. So we know nearing 21 or 22 with deficit spending of about 11 million or 26 million, we're in need of new money. We've known that, we've known that the trigger point to that is that revenue surplus or deficit line. And when the district, when a district starts to deficit spend, it's when we begin that discussion or we're in the midst of that discussion for new money. So we turn the page to 2020 and we adopted a forecast. And if you remember at the time of the forecast in May, we didn't have a lot of the material relevant to closing the fiscal year end and the true financial impact. So what material am I talking about? Well, one, we didn't have CARES Act allocations and we didn't have them drawn down. We didn't know the rules about those expenditures. We didn't know exactly what we could use that for. We knew that early on in those committee members who are on the call tonight, knew that we were trending about a half a million or so per month less in our budget. But again, it wasn't substantial enough on a $350 million budget to say, we're going to have, um, a lot of expenses at the end of the year and we didn't know how we would finish. So that's why we have been waiting and talking about this June forecast. And I just put some asterisks there after talking to one of our board members today, that this is not the board adopted June forecast. We will come back at some point in time. We just closed the fiscal books for the 1920 school year at June 30th and for the last few weeks. And so this is not, this is an unofficial forecast, but the numbers are pretty tight. And you can see that revenue surplus or deficit from the May forecast deficit of minus 3.6 million to a positive, adding to our cash balance about $5 million. From March 13th, 2020, 2020 to through June 30th, uh, we did monitor and report our spending trends, not only to finance committee, to the board and to our committee, our return to school committee on the call. Uh, the, the district finished the year under budget, um, to the tune of about $8.6 million. And this was due primarily to the month-to-month, uh, fewer expenses that we had not being in session. And then 1.7 million in CARES Act that have reimbursed some of those expenses. Hey, Ryan. I was just going to ask for questions before moving on, please.
Yeah. Hey, Ryan. Um, so, so if you scroll back up, you know, I, it, it might be educational for some of the folks who may be joining us just to hear, you know, when you see that, you know, there's a $58 million end of the year cash balance. That sounds like a lot of money, right? Um, but can you, but, but can you talk a bit, um, about sort of what that actually translates into as far as days cash on hand or payrolls?
Thank you for that. So the district has, the district board policy of cash reserve talks about a 10% threshold in which the board and treasurer shall discuss, uh, not dropping below that. So that puts us, it's per budget. So that puts us in fiscal year 2020, about $34 million in cash. Now we've almost doubled that at the end of fiscal year 2020, but you can see that 2021 deficit of minus 14 million. And then the deficit in 2022 of minus 25 million and where that asterisk is on, uh, that third year out shows you that we're reporting under the cash reserve policy. And thank you for the cash on hand. This is obviously less than 60 days cash on hand, which I know we've talked that that's more than a best practice for our corporate counterparts and our other government counterparts. We know that one month's payroll is around 12 to 14 million dollars. So what is that $27 million? Again, we're in fiscal year 21. So I just wanted to show you the impact of 20, but really we're in the school year 2021 or fiscal year 21, where the predicting now of a $14 million deficit spend this year. Hopefully that answers your question and puts some parameters around, um, a 50 or $60 million cash carryover. Those are really essential cash reserves so that we can weather future storms. We just happen to be at the end of that cycle. What other questions on where we've been in the current reconciliation to the forecast?
Anyone with a question, please?
All right. The next section of the report is on levy modeling, uh, both in general, about three different options and a specific millage amount. So we can walk through. This is a little bit more of a detailed forecast. As you can see, it goes out a number of years past five. But we talk about some measurements in this levy modeling. In levy indicators and estimates off to the right, just so we can put green and red trend indicator and then put some numbers to it so that we know, hey, we are really struggling to maintain above that 10% cash reserve policy. So we put some numbers to the left of it. And these are state of Ohio best practices in terms of how to achieve a three to a five-year levy cycle. And you can see those millages are higher than what we expect. So it is not a cliche in Ohio, especially for us, when we say doing more with less. Cause the true academic study of ours, and I know the report shows a little bit small. Many of you have this report in hand, the lower end range of millage, as you can see, increases over time if we don't put a levy on in the November ballot, but you can see they all start at 10 mils and above. And that's just to achieve a three or a five-year cycle. And I just, that's what I wanted the takeaway to be more specifically at this, that unfortunately in Ohio and Akron's not unique about this, is nearing the end of cycles without additional money. Sometimes you still tighten the belt as it relates to levy passage. And this second chart shows all three millages there, 6.9, 7.9 and 8.9. We chose those mills. And just for example, one mil equals around $2.2 million. You can notice the nuance between those three millage scenarios and really between the low end and the high end made by an additional fiscal year. And that's where I think school districts unfortunately are not credited enough with, um, being proactive, right? Because millage scenarios are like this all around Ohio. They don't bias 10 years or 15 or 20. So we are back in front of the public. I'm sure more often than they are interested and more often than we're interested in doing that. But the nuances of even one mil cumulative effect doesn't have much more than from the low end of 6.9 to the high end of 8.9, about one additional fiscal year or school year. So let's look at a specific millage estimate. So it takes that same forecast, extended forecast above. And I don't know if you can see the cursor on your screen or not, but there's a new line item under beginning balance called proposed new levies. And if you remember, our school year is the same as a fiscal year. So the 2021 school year is fiscal 21. However, tax years and calendar years are the same. So that's why you see half a year's collection of the 9.2 million right in the middle of your screen. And fiscal year 22, which is the 21, 22 school year, shows the full collection and then the compound thereafter. You can see at the very bottom of your screen where it says 67 million in cash reserves, 53 million in cash reserves and 27 million is the carried forward end of June forecast. And those numbers right above it of 67 million, 62 million, 55 million and 42 million are the impact, excuse me, impact of a passage of a levy in 2020. What you'll notice about this, um, and is, is difficult as the originator of these reports to model these and see that we still deficit spend in the 2020, 21 school year to the tune of 4.8 million. And that's where I say that a cliche unfortunately is used far too often in schools and that we're expected to do that is even with the passage of a new levy in 2020, we will have to tighten our belt. We will have to become more efficient and obviously we strive to do that every year. $4.8 million is, um, a pretty substantial amount of money for a first year deficit spend. And you can see how that grows to 6.6 and 13.5. So those, this, uh, gets us about three years in the true academic sense. Now what happened between 2012 and currently that got us eight years? Well, the community board and staff was very active since 2012 in reducing our footprint. The superintendent probably can cite the number of buildings, but I know I have a chart in previous presentations that shows the number of buildings in square footage and operational efficiencies that was, um, actively managed. And that assisted in keeping our budget trimmed to, to date. However, we look at that utilization of our buildings right now, we know some clusters are very, very full, but we do not have that kind of excess capacity or I guess benefit to reduce our footprint to right size and also save operational dollars. The next part really is to, uh, get the questions or the discussion going for the board and the superintendent is a few FAQs that I've received. And how did you plan for the reopening of the 2120 or the 2021 school year? And this is the actual spreadsheet that we are working off of for our CARES Act. So people can see we are actually going out bidding, purchasing, have purchased. We've purchased more than 1.6 or 1.7 million dollars of supplies, related materials, hotspots, safety team members, thermometers, um, additional Chromebook covers since we're remote, assistance for bus drivers if we return and, uh, up at the top, it's good to remind each other that if we were to open in person with all 21,000 students, this is what the operations team put in place in terms of where it says Esser, that's CARES Act, local grant or general fund off to the far right. So will it be that much? Uh, probably not. We understand that we're heading to more virtual or blended. So a lot of these expenses will pull back, but remember these have to last us till 2022. Couple other questions. What happens if we don't put a levy on the ballot in 2020? So if we were to pass an operating levy in November of 2020, we would begin collections. We'd start to see revenue from that in January of 21. Whether we put an initiative on the May or November of 21 ballot and pass, regardless of which we would pass, we would not see additional revenue until January of 22. So that's another, uh, full school year and a half of belt tightening prior to seeing any additional dollars. And then a lot of questions that I know you're asked and I'm asked as well as, uh, from the closure of March 13th through, if the district returns in the fall virtually, will there be layoffs or furloughs? And of course I don't have that answer today. But a one thing that I wanted to clarify on the furlough language, because I know we've talked about that publicly, is school districts really don't qualify for furloughs. This would need to be conversations with our bargaining groups. And obviously and unfortunately, school districts in Ohio have, um, too much experience with layoffs. So this is a very, very unique time. And the disruption to our students' lives and our families' lives is, um, incomprehensible. And to, to do the kind of accurate budgeting we need to do as much as our reopening plan is changing daily at this point. Uh, so I welcome, I turn this over to you, the board and the superintendent, and I welcome the conversation. So I can be a good listener and take some notes here.
Good. Thank you, Ryan, for that presentation. We appreciate you sending the report ahead of time, uh, so that we could, uh, get a look at it. I left a comment in the chat. If you have questions, uh, please let me know, um, or, or raise your hand. I'll try to see you if you raise your hand, but, um, while Ryan's sharing his screen, uh, I can see fewer of you. So if you have questions or comments, please throw it in the chat and let me know so I can hand it over to you.
Patrick, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Alexander.
This is for David and Ryan. Uh, when we talk about the levy, um, and we talked about different millages, what millage would you recommend, are you recommending that we select, uh, that will help us to, uh, be able to continue, uh, a good educational process for the students and keep our, our district afloat and, uh, will help with, with the public, uh, not having to go back in their pockets too soon?
Well, I'll, I'll start and then the superintendent can, uh, jump in. I think the first question we need to answer is whether or not we're going to go on the ballot this November or next year. As you saw from a couple of those charts, I know they're a little bit busy, but if we delay for a year and put a, an initiative on in the 2021 calendar year, we don't collect until January of 22. Technically speaking, we should be asking for additional millage than that. Now historically in Akron, back 30 plus years, the largest millage attempt that Akron Public Schools has ever attempted is 8.9. We actually did pass one, three or four levy attempts. So, um, practically speaking, realistically speaking, Mr. Alexander, I think that's the, uh, 7.9 to 8.9 mil levy is where we should be focusing our efforts. And again, the difference between those is, uh, 2.2 million dollars. That's not just per year. Remember that compound's out. So hopefully that answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Alexander, I'd just like to add, you know, the point that, uh, 7.9 has historically, you know, in my history here, been kind of the sweet spot for our operating levies.
Okay.
Thank you for the question. Anyone else? Dr. Hall?
Yeah, thanks, Ryan, for putting this together. Um, I guess my, my first question was, um, is there a way that, you know, to the folks who may be tuning in, you know, that are, you know, homeowners in various parts of the city, um, maybe one of the things we could think about is sort of translating this in a way that makes sense to, uh, the average homeowner. So if you, if you own a home that is valued at $75,000 or you own a home that's valued at $125,000, you know, what does that translate in additional, um, property taxes that, that you'd be paying per year? You know, with respect to the various millage amounts. Reason why I ask the question too, is because I know that, you know, and I think the data I seen is that approximately 41% of, of folks in Akron rent as well, right? So, so we can probably count on, um, you know, uh, this being passed on, you know, in, in, in the form of, you know, slightly higher rents as well, right? As, as, as property owners, you know, you know, want to pass this on. So, so again, so that, that's my ask is that we kind of, um, as we, as we continue talking about this, um, try to provide some additional ways that, that, that kind of, that the layperson can kind of comprehend what these large numbers and, you know, and things like millage calculation, sort of what it kind of looks like, you know, in, in very practical terms. So that's kind of my question slash comment. Um, uh, I, you know, I was going to ask too, um, you know, I know that to, you know, to, and again, I'm trying to speak from the, from the perspective of a layperson, because obviously I'm on the finance committee with you, Ms. Autry. You know, but if I'm a layperson and I'm looking at the spreadsheets that you were showing earlier, which kind of showed the yearly expenditures, you know, those, those numbers are going up, right? So maybe a question that, that a person might ask is, well, I see that in one year where, you know, it's 345 million expenditures and next year it's 359 and. you know, it's 345 million expenditures and next year it's 359, then next year it's 375, then it's 395, you know? So a person may wonder, you know, about the additional increase in expenditures. And is that something that is controllable, you know, yes or no? And if not, what are some of the contributing things to that? So again, so that's me trying to sort of tee you up a bit, if you will, to kind of, you know, speak more to the, you know, the public about some of these things. So.
Great. On the first item, in terms of what it costs an average homeowner, yes, absolutely. We had talked about leading up to that. If the board chooses to pass these resolutions tonight, first and foremost, there is no commitment that the board will be on the ballot in November. This is the first step, calling the resolution of necessity, which gives me and directs me to go to the county fiscal office and certify those numbers, Dr. Hall, so that we can get back to the local taxpayers and say, based on the certification of these numbers, here's what it's going to cost the average taxpayer prior to the second resolution called the resolution to proceed, placing a question on the November ballot. So that will be at a follow-up meeting where we can say, if chosen the 6.9, 7.9, or 8.9, or even in November or not, here's what it's going to cost based on those certifications. The levy expenses as it relates to this, I know board members may remember or may want to forget from our orientation in January when you first took office about that revenue versus expense chart that I drew on the board for you. And that's, that really goes to the nature of school funding in Ohio. And unfortunately, why there has been 11,000 school levies in Ohio since the last Deroff case is that the legislature with House Bill 920 eliminated the inflationary growth measure on our revenue. That's the number one reason we go back to our voting public. And every district has their own levy cycle. Ours happens to be about every six years. That being said, the expense side, as you all know, managing your own expenses, whether it be business or private or household, those expenses grow with wages, definitely with benefits. They have grown in the past due to school choice options. So our charter community, school choice, open enrollment through purchase services, those have grown. We've had some support, maybe some relief recently about some larger inflationary growth items here about electricity, natural gas, and some of our operational costs over the past few years. But traditionally, inflation hits that side of the expense equation. To the extent they're controllable, that is largely influenced by our staff. So the majority of any school district's budget is staff-driven. And so when we talked about reducing our footprint and being able to be operationally more efficient, we were able to obviously reduce staff through attrition over this past eight-year cycle with the closure of buildings. That's obviously the way that any school district wants to manage its footprint. But when you have 70, in our case, 70 to 75% of our budget is staffing-related costs. Those are about the only ways that we can control the expense side, the largest portion of our expenses.
Questions. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing no other questions, I know there have been a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of questions around our reopening, and we do need to get to that in a moment. Mr. Pendleton, I did want to ask, you have three resolutions of necessity based on different millage amounts that you were going to ask the board to entertain this evening at 6.9, 7.9, and 8.9 mils. And again, these are resolutions of necessity. And as Mr. Pendleton pointed out there, even should the board entertain these and vote on these, these are simply so we can certify these amounts with the Summit County Fiscal Office. We can get those amounts back and begin to plug in those finalized amounts into our equations to determine how much these levies would produce should we decide to put one on the ballot. This, these would not be votes to put any levy on the ballot. So if you would like to entertain those, I would suggest we probably do that now. And I, you know, unless I'm mistaken, I assume since they're all the same resolution with just different millage amounts, that by acclamation, we could vote on all three at the same time? Would that be your, would you concur with that?
That would be my recommendation. And I believe Diana Fidal's also on the call. If she disagrees, she can correct us. But we needed three, we talked about combining them into one resolution, one consent motion and approval on the three separate resolutions is okay by me unless we hear otherwise from Mrs. Fidal.
All right. And because I would, you know, if, and just as a reminder to our board, there are two sets of resolutions that we need to pass no later than August 5th in order to certify any levy question to the ballot 90 days out ahead of the general election. Because we've had this discussion a few times, I would suggest that we put these resolutions to a vote now and allow the board to weigh in. And again, if the board does choose to pass these levies, then this is not officially putting this item on the ballot. I think we've said that three or four times tonight. We just want to make that clear. But it is taking the next step to allow us to determine if we were to put a levy on the ballot, which millage we would put forth. So I would ask at this time a motion from our board.
Mr. President, if I may, this is Diana Fidal.
Yes, go ahead.
Just, I would recommend vote, doing a separate vote on each of the three resolutions since they are separate resolutions.
Thank you. So we'll start with the 6.9 and I would ask for a motion from our board.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Ms. Autry, a second by Ms. McKittrick. Any comments, question, or discussion?
Yeah, just for clarification, we're going to be voting on all three of these so we can move forward if we need to, correct?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other comments, question, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on the resolution for 7.9 mils, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Ms. Mansfield. Any comments, question, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar? Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, on the resolution for 8.9 mil, do we have a motion?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, there is a bit of a delay. So we do have his vote as a yes on the resolution for 8.9 mil. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. So moved.
Thank you. A motion by Ms. Mansfield, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar? Thank you.
Thank you so much for entertaining those motions to our board. There's been a lot of questions and discussions on the reopening plan, and we've received a lot of feedback and we appreciate all of that. And as many of you know, this has been an ongoing discussion for several weeks and it likely will be an ongoing discussion for the next few weeks. We know that the community wants answers and they would like to know what our plans are for the fall. And nobody more so than our own board and our own staff. But we want to be thoughtful and we want to make sure that we are taking our time and that our goal is to open schools safely and not just quickly. So we thank you for, for being patient with us and for sending us your questions and your feedback. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent to give us some additional updates and thoughts on our reopening plan. And then we're going to open it up for discussion. As usual, if you'd like to start jumping in line too with questions, please do so in the chat. Let me know that you have questions or comments and I'll turn it over as soon as we open it up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just provide an update on where we are just in terms of community spread. I've talked to Summit County Public Health, of course, you know, listened to a recent interview from the governor. And we do still continue in Summit County to have issues with community spread, which has been the basis of a lot of questions that were forwarded to us. Friday, we had an Ohio Eight Coalition meeting. That's the big eight urban districts. And many of our sister districts are rethinking, you know, how they're going to approach a return to school. Based on last week's board meeting, I know there were various questions posed about reopening. And, you know, many of them, you know, are real easy to answer. We already do Chromebooks for all of our students. Someone had a question about that. There were questions about how would, like, for instance, we had three options, whether we're going to, you know, return in person, do a blended model where we looked at, you know, grades kindergarten to grade two and then three on up, you know, until we get to middle school and then our middle school through high school. And so when we looked at the blended model, we looked at, do we have enough space to have each of our K through three? Actually, was the initial plan to have those students in our elementary buildings five days a week. And as we've gone through and looked at six feet of social distancing, we could fit grades K through two. And we still need a little bit of extra space. But to get grades K to three within our buildings, we would need additional space in the community. That would be applicable for education. And that's a little difficult for us to find. We have very few, you know, we auctioned off some of our vacant buildings, which really aren't great for education, educational purposes, which is why we auction them off. But we took a look at that and it looks like we could actually fit K through two, but would have an issue with third grader. I know there are some staff, teachers who were concerned about third graders. A couple of questions had to do with what would, in an on 100% remote option, how would that look? Would it be the same as the spring? And the answer to that is no. There would be a lot more rigor and a lot more time with teachers at that level. Some of the other ones had to do more with cleanliness. And then again, what happens if someone is infected with COVID at school? Summit County Public Health has procedures for that. They do the contact tracing. Typically, a person would be referred to their physician from, you know, their family physician, and then they'd have to be isolated between 10 and 14 days. And additionally, they would need to have, I think, three days with no elevated temperature without a fever reducer. And so the health department would have those responsibilities of following up with people, notifying us if there are people who need to be monitored or sent home if they were exposed to someone. And that's all done through their contact tracing. Some of the other questions got more in detail about, you know, the cleanliness of buildings. Someone had an issue about the HVAC system. You know, with that one, you basically, most of the people on the building side would refer to an organization called ASHRAE, the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and air conditioning engineers for their standards about that. And they have standards which cover hospitals, office buildings, you know, non-hospital settings. There are various filters people can purchase or other items that can be put into an HVAC system. Hospital systems are designed very differently than what a school would be. Those are some things we've looked at. We've also looked at the issue of masks. You know, the recommendations from the state would be if you're over age 10 on up, you probably should wear a mask. And it's, you know, up to school districts to decide. There was a question about liability, you know, as a public agency in the state of Ohio under Ohio revised code. You know, as long as we're acting, you know, along the guidelines of what health experts are talking about, what recommendations are out there, whether it's from the CDE, Summit County Public Health, you know, health providers that we partner with, as long as it isn't some, you know, egregious abdication of our responsibilities to look into those things. We're pretty well protected from that. Doesn't mean someone can't sue you for something. They can, but basically we're protected under that sovereign immunity statute. I'm not the attorney, but I did check with Diana Fidal from Retso on those issues. So again, in our guidelines, the draft guidelines, which you do have, we talked about requiring people who enter our buildings to have masks. And that would be for all students, K through 12, of course, all of our staff. Some of the other issues, you know, there was an issue about school buses. And I know there was a question about whether it's 22 or 44. That was vetted by Summit County Public Health. I know the Ohio Department of Education at the state has pushed that recommendation out to other districts. And I'm not saying that that's the end-all-be-all. You know, the Cuyahoga County Department of Health, working with school districts up there, recommend one kid per seat from the last information I had. I don't know if that changed, but there are some, you know, basically what I'm saying, there are some challenges to having some in-person attendance at school, whether it's going to be five days, two days, or three days just because of the level of community spread in our community. We also had issues about, you know, whether water fountains are going to be cleaned. Those are part of a cleaning schedule. Someone mentioned, you know, like checklist or whatever. There's a daily inspection form that the committee developed for elementary, middle, and high school. Similar to this building, we have our custodians wiping the high contact spaces periodically through the day. The same would happen, you know, for our schools. I think I mentioned last week Laura Kepler in child nutrition, you know, was thinking that the USDA guidelines for serving meals, regardless of whether kids are in school or even remote or combination, we believe the rules will be flexible enough so we can still do grab and go meals. We weren't really planning on having kids, you know, looking at them in our cafeterias because of crowding concerns if we were in. If we were in in-person school, looking at having feeding done in the classroom or having the grab-and-go meal service, depending on the option that the board selects. So there are, you know, I'll be honest with you. Looking at some of the stories, not just here in Ohio, in Summit County, but around the country, I think schools are coming to the realization that it's going to be very challenging to open up to in-person learning in the fall. We know that some of the largest districts in the country, like Los Angeles Unified, San Diego, and several others are looking at remote learning. From where I sit, that might be something we may need to look at starting our school year in as remote, 100% remote learning. And then as we get additional information from the state health department, our local health department in terms of community spread, looking at going to maybe some of those blended models slowly, ramping up to possibly, you know, full in-school learning for all of our students, but I don't know when that would happen. I would say we should probably take a look at things a quarter at a time, so midway through a semester, evaluate where things are going, and then make plans accordingly on how to, you know, how to make adjustments in that. My fear is if we go even with a blended model, and this is just my opinion, you know, I respect the work of our internal committee, but when I have to look at all the data, I'm afraid when we come back, if we come back, even with a blended model, I'll have kids who will come to school, whether it's the flu, scarlet fever, indigestion, or food poisoning, or a cold, or some allergy, or what have you, where there's a temperature, we're going to have a problem. Heaven forbid it's a case of COVID-19. We're going to have even a bigger problem because then we're going to have to do all the contact tracing. We have to determine which staff members may potentially be impacted. And I can see us, just like we have had in some of our past flu seasons, where we might not be able to staff a building, or we're getting close to a point where, you know, if we have large numbers of staff and students not present, it'll be very difficult to run school, and that can happen at multiple buildings. So those were, you know, some of the things that I've been taking a look at. I know staff has been looking at. The other thing is we did send out a parent survey, which closed about 25 minutes ago. I did see some early results, and it basically just asked the parents. We sent it out to, I think, over 10,000 families where we have the email address on their, in their data, and asked them if they preferred the, you know, in-person, remote, or the blended model. And so we'll be passing that information once it's tabulated this evening. We'll be sending it out to you tomorrow. This morning, I looked at some of the data. I think we had over nearly 2,700 responses, and they were split. I think most of the folks were talking about the remote, and then to a lesser amount, but not by much, the other two options of blended, and then in-person, and there was also a space for them to make comments. So there's, you know, I know a lot of parents have concerns about sending their kids into school and just making sure that they are going to be safe. Other than that, I just want to highlight, you know, the issue. I know there have been questions about whether it's three feet or six feet. So I know the information we have from CDC, the World Health Organization, talks about three feet, and with face masks reduce your potential for exposure. But when you go to six feet, that risk falls off by a much greater amount, as long as there's face mask being worn. So that's where some of that, that six-feet issue came. I know some districts are talking about three. I think our recommendation has been for any in-person, even in this building, we place folks who are in here at least six feet distant from each other and feel that helps limit the spread, particularly with face masks, which everyone in this building is required to wear unless you're in your own office behind a closed door. So that's where we are with that, and I'll turn it over to, I think, Pat and maybe Karen Gijic, if they, if there are any questions or they have any comments. You may have questions from any of the various subcommittees, and we'll entertain those questions. We're not asking for any kind of vote. There's a little bit more work that we would need to do, and I think we would report out again, maybe in some more fuller, of course, fuller detail at the board meeting a week from today.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So I just want to say again for all of the work that you and your staff have put into this. I know it's a lot of work. I know the staff, a lot of questions.
Hey, Patrick. I don't know. I can't hear you. Sorry for interrupting you.
No, I can't hear you either.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, a little bit.
Okay. So I just wanted to say again, I wanted to pass along my thanks to the superintendent and the staff, the assistant superintendent and their staff, for all of the work that you've put into this. I know that we've asked a lot of questions. We've passed along a lot of feedback. We continue to receive emails and phone calls and social media messages. And we've said from the beginning that this is a work in progress. This decision is going to take some time because, again, we are in, we are interested in opening schools safely, not just quickly. And so we want to make sure that we are being very thoughtful and deliberate about the process that we're using to get there. And we know that things may change, sometimes on a daily basis. The vice president and I were on a call this morning with the superintendent, following his call with Donna Sotter, our health commissioner, and things changed, and more information comes out. We appreciate, again, the patience that the public has with us as we figure things out for the safety of our kids and our staff. And please just know that things will continue to change as we move along. At some point, we'll need to make a decision. But right now, as the superintendent said, there's a lot more information that we need to gather. And the teacher can say that while we may have originally recommended a blended model, there is some more homework that they would like to do on what it would look like if we started with a virtual option and moved slowly to a blended option. So at this time, we're going to open it up for questions, and I know Dr. Akbar would like to start, and then we will go to Mr. Alexander. So Dr. Akbar?
Yeah, I don't know if if Karen or someone was going to make a statement. They may answer my question. It might be helpful if they were, if they were going to say something, we heard them first. Just in case.
Yeah, I have Mary Kelly, who's present. I'm not sure she has a comment, but she's certainly available to help answer any questions.
Good evening. Dr. Akbar, at this time, we do not have a prepared statement, but we are prepared to field any questions that you may have.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, so I have two questions. Well, I have more questions, but I'm just going to keep it to two for now. And this question, I don't know if this is for the superintendent or Mary or Mark or Karen or someone, but I'm specifically thinking about the superintendent's statement around having more dynamic, more of a online learning environment for our students than we had, that we were stressed upon come at the end of the last year. I'm really thinking about, and even Pat might even be able to help with this. I'm thinking about how can we best afford that to happen? Would it be beneficial for our teachers to have even one or two extra weeks? I know the superintendent asked for a few days previously when we were thinking about multiple options, but now that makes me think maybe, you know, one or two extra weeks will give them time to work as a team, to collaborate, to create some options for our students. Some more than that would be helpful. Or if there's other things that you might say that the board can support you. Helpful if it will provide that high-quality dynamic for online learning experience for our students.
Karen?
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, we had, I was knocked off for a minute, but I'm back online, so I'm just here. Go ahead, Mary. Okay, I was going to say, we did have that discussion, and Karen Gijic would like to share out for us.
I would, Dr. Akbar. It's a very good question, and I appreciate the way that you asked it in relation to how we quickly had to pivot in the spring for online learning. So now, we do have the opportunity, and we have been doing research, and the teachers have been joining us under Pat's direction on collaborative teams to look at what would that online learning look like? What are the schedules for students? So we know a lot more now than we knew March 20th, whenever our life changed forever. So we look forward to the time that Dr. McWilliams Woods asked for, and our superintendent has supported to move back the start of school. And right now, hearing this news tonight, we believe that we can start to plan more aggressively for that online approach.
Okay. Thank you. I think I heard you, just so that I can be clear. Yeah, I think you're saying just those few extra days that the superintendent talked about previously should be enough? And more time isn't necessarily, you think that you have enough with those three or four days?
Right now, we are, we are confident that we can start the plan with those days, and should we require more, we will come through the superintendent to this board. We don't want to ask for days, just to ask for days. We want to be mindful of our students who need to be in contact with our teachers to engage around education. So we will ask, should we need, because we know that this board is generous, and we know that this board supports the superintendent in relation to the education of Akron's children. So thank you for that offer.
Yeah, no problem. And I guess just to the superintendent, I don't know if this is, the board agrees with me. So this is my personal statement. I would ask, I think it would be helpful if you all talked about that, and actually, with the proposal that we get on Monday, to talk about that all together. I think it would be helpful. I'm all for giving teachers a little more time to prepare. Not everyone is digitally native. And so being able to have more time to collaborate with your team as teachers to do something that no one really, you know, went to school for, you know, as a person who went to school to be a teacher myself and taught middle school with a projector screen. You know, it, everyone's not taught or goal to go to school. I think that if we should consider giving our teachers a little more time, it'll be a better end product for our students and our parents, and I think a less painful process for our teachers as well. That's just something I would want to put out. And then last question I had, which was a part of the, I don't know, 20-page or whatever page document that you sent, Dr. James, out, the extensive plans. And I thought it was really comprehensive. There are a few questions I have, and I'll ask you, so the other ones offline. But the one that I really wanted to know, because I got three calls today about athletics, and a lot of people want to know about athletics. You know, I had got a call, two calls about Firestone and some, some issue that they're having there, which I'm not even going to go into all the details. But I'm wondering, does it make sense to even be thinking about having in-person athletics at this point, knowing that the coronavirus currently is on the rise in our area?
That is a big question. It also involves music, you know, for our choirs, our bands and orchestras, as well as our sports teams, you know, cheerleaders or other club. That's a big issue, and, you know, we're still working through that. I want to see what the Ohio High School Athletic Association is talking about. You know, we're members of the Northeast Ohio ESC, and there have been some conversations, I think, that whether schools should band together and just tell the Athletic Association that, you know, they do have some big concerns about sports, and particularly, you know, the contact sports where, you know, kids are in close proximity to each other. And then for some of the, you know, just the physical rigor of that, you know, those kids should be wearing masks. Is that even possible, you know, for football or something? When you're, you know, you're on a field and it's hot outside, and, you know, you have a lot of other issues to worry about, you know, just with hydration and, you know, and heating, and that could be a big issue. So I thank you for bringing that up because that is something we need to discuss. And it won't be a good, let me, let me just say this. There are lots of things that I've had to be involved with, you know, in my time as superintendent of Akron Public Schools, and many of those decisions have not been popular because they're really, you know, you're always going to have people on both sides of the question. So regardless of, you know, how we go back to school and this decisions about athletics, it will be a very hot-button issue for people. You know, in this case, when we dealt with issues before, it should, safety should be top of mind because we don't want to have our employees adversely impacted, and we definitely don't want to have our students adversely impacted.
Thank you.
Mr. Alexander?
I just had a couple of comments. You know, and I know that all of us would love to have all our kids go back to school, fully back at school. Teachers want to be in school. Parents want the kids to be in school. But I don't think that's, it's not going to happen, I don't think. And I want the public to know that that's probably not going to happen, so don't think that will happen. But I do like the blended learning. I like that idea. But I do also have concerns about contact, you know, what's going on, and what happened in school. So it might be better to have virtual learning. I'm not the biggest fan of that because I know teachers want to be in there with their students, and students want to be with the teachers and so forth, because it's good for them. It's a good way for them to learn and be nourished. And so I think that, but I do think that what, we, once we get more information from you all, you guys, if you have to do more, get more information, do more research if you have to, that whatever decision you come back, but I think we probably would be willing to move forward as long as it, we're looking at all the safety precautions, because there are a lot of safety precautions that we need to look at and try to hit all those areas so that we keep everyone safe. We want everyone, not just some people, but everyone, that means the staff, the students, of course, and the community. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Dr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, my mute button was stuck. So I think we all kind of work with the web issue. we all kind of work with the, um, the web issues, um, so, so I, I've got a number of comments that, that I'd like to make, um, but before I get to those comments, I did have a question to ask, um, I know that Dr. James referenced the survey that, um, that had a high number of responses that, that was closing today, and he had referenced that, um, that, that those results will be shared out in due time, um, uh, that reminded me that, uh, that Ms. Scheit with AEA, uh, referenced the survey, uh, with her teacher membership, uh, the last board meeting, that she, uh, had, had said that she would be the one to share the results of as well, um, so I, I'd be keenly interested, Ms. Scheit, if you have those survey results handy, I, I would very much, I would like to hear, you know, what your members, um, shared with you via, via that survey.
Uh, sure, I'd be happy to do that. I would, I would just like to say first, though, first, we have almost 2,400 members. The response we got was mainly from our 1,800 or so educators, uh, in the buildings, um, our other membership would be substitutes and other types of, uh, job classifications. So out of those 1,800 educators, we had roughly 80% response rate, or almost 1,400, uh, responses, and of those, um, survey questions answered, we also had an additional close to 500 or so individual comments or concerns, which we're still putting into a user-friendly format. So we, our, our teachers overwhelmingly would love to return to the classroom, they're educators, they know that students do best in the classroom, um, however, the survey also showed overwhelmingly that our teachers felt that there were quite a few unanswered safety concerns, that safety is not guaranteed, so if, if we didn't have to deal with COVID, they're saying, obviously, they'd rather be in the classroom. However, they were very concerned that with all the guidances come out over the last number of weeks, and even the current guidance of all the things we're not supposed to be doing as a society, many of the things that we're recommending are those exact same things that we're not really supposed to be doing, um, and they're also concerned with that we're going through kind of an uptick in COVID, uh, community spread, and we haven't even gotten to the fall and winter regular flu season yet, in addition to any resurgence of COVID. They're aware of food insecurities, they're aware of instructional losses on virtual learning, however, many of the comments were this is life and death decisions that we have to make, they, they were, they're very concerned about safety, um, and it's not that, uh, our members don't support the models, for instance, on, um, the three models that we presented on June 29th to the board, of those, uh, 1,400 or so responses, uh, responding to, uh, the possibility of 100% virtual learning, we had almost half, or 46% of our teachers say they believe we should be 100% virtual at this time. We had, if the, if they had to go back to blended learning, with a blended learning model, we also have about half of them that would consider that, however, the 100% virtual learning is their preference. So it's not that they don't support the models, but they believe in their comments and in their responses to the questions we ask, that it's just, they believe it's just too soon to bring kids back, there's way too many, and I won't dig down in the weeds of, of the details of the survey unless you'd like to ask specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but, um, overwhelmingly, over half of our teachers believe that at minimum, they'd like the board to tap the brakes for a moment, uh, at minimum for perhaps the first six weeks of school, the first grading period, and possibly even the first semester, um, the reason why they're saying at minimum the first six weeks is that, uh, for planning purposes, to be rigorous in lesson planning and lesson delivery, uh, they don't believe as educators it's a good idea to bring students back to school, or keep them out for two weeks, bring them back for a week or two, then have to bring them out again, they'd like to be able to plan at minimum for, uh, an entire grading period. So that's where they are, they, they, they're just, with everything that's happened, particularly in the last few weeks, um, they're just very, very concerned that it's not a good idea to bring students back to the buildings at this moment, or, or staff.
Are there, um, were there any other questions that were in the survey, you know, that you feel that the, the, the board should be aware of, from a either, either from, from a result standpoint, you know, that, a, as you sort of walk through it, again, 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 I, I haven't seen your surveys, I, I don't know the questions that, that were asked, but, but were there other questions that sort of jumped out at you for one read, for, for one reason or the other, from a result standpoint, that you would want to make sure that, that, that the board was aware of, and the county administration?
Almost, uh, 84% felt that everybody, students, all the way down to kindergarten and all staff, if we would be back in the buildings, everybody should be wearing masks. The one huge thing was, you know, our teachers are planners, obviously, um, and we put things down on paper, and we plan very specifically, and they believe, and, and I, I guess I do too, if I'm giving my personal opinion, based on all these comments that we've made, that we can be diligent and plan, make all these contingency plans, and say we're going to look at student, um, behaviors, and what if students don't do this, and put everything down on paper, but the reality of the classroom, I think I spoke about this the last board meeting, the reality of the classroom, what happens in our buildings usually is very, uh, much different than what we believe it's going to be. Uh, our, our teachers have behaviors to deal with, um, they anticipate, uh, health concerns, um, 97% of our teachers believe that it will be dangerous to have to deal with our students' behaviors or health concerns in the classroom. What if a student says, "I'm not wearing that mask"? What if a student thinks it's funny to cough in the face of another student, or in the face of a teacher? What if a child gets sick, they're asymptomatic and they don't know they're sick for a few days, and they expose people, those 10 or 12 or 15 people in a classroom are going to take that exposure home to their own families. So we have, you know, parents at home, we have childcare people at home, we have grandparents at home, um, it, it's just, the, the numbers are just very, very concerning, and the what-ifs, um, that we, none of us can answer, uh, the what-ifs, but we do know that, at least from a teacher's point of view, as much as they want to be in a classroom, as much as they want to have face-to-face instruction with their students, they, again, the one, uh, theme that we had over and over and over again in the comments and in their responses was, it's just too dangerous, I believe, fill in the blank teacher's name, they believe it's too dangerous at this time, they believe we need to wait and see, and make decisions as we get more information, that this process, while there was a, I want to honor the people that worked on this process, it was a lot of work into developing the models, but knowing what we know right now, and based on what our teachers feel, uh, they believe that we need to wait and see, and just tap the brakes on returning to the buildings, even in a blended model, and see what happens, and take the time to do more research and have a more purposeful plan in place.
Thank you for that, I, I, so, I, I saw that Ms. Autry popped in the chat with the question, so, I have some comments I'd like to make, but, but I also recognize that some of my colleagues may have questions about the survey results, so, so Mr. President, I'm gonna hold my comments until everyone has a chance to ask questions about the survey results, and then, and then I'd like, and then I'd like to break back in with my commentary, if that's okay.
Thank you, Dr. Hall, that's perfect, Ms. Autry.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, so much, uh, I, I just want to also, uh, thank the team again for putting this together, I know it was not a easy process, I definitely respect the work, um, Derek did ask my question about the union survey, and I'm happy to hear that information, um, it was, a lot of that stuff I strongly suspected anyway, and I do appreciate that we did have the parents' survey, because I think that's very important, I heard from a lot of families who appreciated being able to add their input, and that's a significant number. Question, um, two comments, actually, I was reading the report, um, I was wondering, um, if we, this is actually in terms of using the buildings, because I had someone who tried to use the building, they had to attach a safety plan to the permit request, and I'm just wondering, moving forward, um, is, will we have like a template, um, so that the community groups, et cetera, don't have to, I guess, figure out what a safety plan is, we can start educating, or have something attached to permits, um, so that, again, the community wanting to use the CLCs moving forward, has that information, without having to try to, you know, guess that on their own. My other comment is, have we had any updates regarding our College and Career Academy partners, and how they're going to, um, how some of those, uh, field trips, et cetera, projects, uh, experience to learn is gonna look like? Is there anything that they've been working on?
Yeah, there have been, um, a couple of conversations, for instance, um, with our Essential Experiences program, I did speak with, uh, the folks at the G R Foundation, you know, they're funding that, and they're actually working through how to make those experiences virtual, and have been working with the partners, and, you know, I'll turn it over to Mary, she may have some additional commentary, uh, about that.
So at the elementary level, we are working with the G R Foundation to create a schedule along with, uh, Karen Gijic's department, because they really do oversee that for us, because it's curriculum, but our partners are looking at being scheduled into the classrooms based on our grade level curriculum standards and the program that we currently have in place. So with our, uh, first graders and their experience that they have with the Akron Zoo, it's in two parts, but we're, where they have the Zoo Mobile come to the classroom and do some activities with the students, and then prior to COVID, they were going to the zoo, that's the part that we would be looking at, uh, possibly doing a combination, if we are, uh, face-to-face, doing a combination of face-to-face and video, and then grades three through six, we're looking at doing, uh, pretty much virtually on, uh, we're thinking possibly Mondays, but again, it depends on what the board approves for us to make some final decisions, but we are in discussions at the elementary level, and then if Rachel would like to, uh, address any of the College and Career Academy schedules.
Yes, thanks, uh, Mary, I would like to just share that we are ready to go with providing all of those guaranteed experiences for our students, whether it's an industry field trip, a job shadowing, uh, college visits, um, in either a virtual or blended or face-to-face model, we're really just, um, kind of in a holding pattern at this point, until the board makes a final decision on what that's gonna look like, and we're gonna have an opportunity to be nimble in the delivery of those opportunities for kids based on wherever, whatever our instructional model is at the time, so we can support it virtually, we're ready to provide those virtually, if we go to blended, we'll, we'll be able to provide that as well, and then face-to-face, just like we did last year, so, um, I think we're, we're in a good place to continue all of those real-world learning experiences that, um, is really critical to College and Career Academies.
Thank you, Ms. Autry, any follow-up?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mansfield.
Thanks, everyone, um, again, I want to reiterate what my, um, colleagues have said regarding their, uh, appreciation for the team, I want to make sure that it's very clear that this board is not questioning their expertise, we're not, um, we know that there are folks in those, in those groups that between them have probably thousand years of experience in education, so it's not that we're asking these questions because we doubt that, that we support all of their work, I heard from several people whose feelings were kind of hurt, and I, I want to make sure that we make it clear that we do support them, um, I think that what we're saying as far as the blended learning model and all the work that they've done is maybe not no, but maybe not right now, just because of the, the, the changes that have happened, so when this whole process started with them, we are not in the same place we are right now, so, um, I, I just want to make that clear, because we are not questioning that, that we're just kind of delaying that, that plan for now, um, I guess, I'd like to know a little about if we have plans for maybe more synchronized learning, I know at the collegiate level, that's really going to be, um, a vital part of the semester that we're headed into, and then, I don't want people to think that we're not thinking about the parents and the children in families where, where there's not gonna be an option for someone to be home with little people, um, the ones that are keeping me up at night are, um, I keep seeing six and seven-year-olds trying to do distance learning, um, I know our parents are not just essential workers and first responders, but they're store managers, they're, um, waitresses, they're, they work like I do in a court, or they work, um, at, at a supermarket, so they have to go to work, and so, um, I, I just have to say that out loud, and I know that we're, we are thinking about those, all of our conversations, all the conversations I've had with the administration and with other board members has involved that, so I'm just throwing that out there in case you want to talk a little bit about that also, Mr. Superintendent, thank you.
Sure, I'll, I'll handle that one, um, probably first, because there have been some comments about, you know, concerns that parents have to go to work, and we do understand that. The other thing I want to talk about too is, you know, this isn't a one-way proposition, um, our students have just as much to be concerned about from our staff than just as much as staff have to be worried about the students, and here's why, you know, after the end of a school day, we have no control where a staff member or a student goes, you know, and what happens during those off-hours, where they could be someplace in the community, um, you know, depending on the situation, you know, and get, uh, a COVID infection, and then return to school, and then pass it on to other people, so, you know, that can go either way, that could be a staff member, you know, going out to a patio restaurant or something that's crowded, and then come, you know, and somehow pick it up, you don't know, or touch the elevator button, you know, who knows? So it, it, it's a two-way proposition, and I, and, you know, I know our team, uh, you know, realizes that, I think in terms of what happened in the spring was a real quick flip, and remember, we really, you know, we were one of the few districts that continued instruction, I mean, we had some time off, you know, we worked with AEA to work on getting our teachers trained, and they flipped that really fast, and we were actually doing instruction, um, other districts, they were just, you know, um, calamity days, or, you know, not real classroom learning, and I think, you know, I think, um, uh, Karen Gijic mentioned it, that, you know, our staff have learned a lot from that, so I think our, you know, online learning next version, uh, is gonna look a little bit different than it did in the spring, so, I mean, we're all concerned about that rigor, um, you know, that kids need to have, and I'll, you know, I'll make a comment from, uh, my colleague, uh, who was a union president in Cincinnati, Julie Sellers, made at our Highway meeting, you know, she said, you know, in the past, we've had, um, schools closed because of polio, um, you know, the flu, over 100- Um, you know, the flu over a hundred years ago, but she said one thing that stuck with me. And, um, she said, you know, her teachers have to bring kids up to speed. Who are immigrants who show up to school and can't speak English or don't have a lot of English. Or maybe haven't even had school in their home country. But when they come here, we've had experience with that. She said, you know, teachers are notorious for getting kids caught up. And, um, she's why this is, while this is a difficult time, she said, you know, once things get back to normal. She said her teachers will be working really hard to get kids caught up and that stuck with me. Um, when, uh, she said that because she's right. Um, all the things that, you know, I've seen many of our teachers do with some of our more difficult populations because of where they are when they come here. Um, you know, we just have to get to that point where we can have more in-person learning. And unfortunately, you know, from where I sit, there's just a lot of safety concerns that I have, not only for our staff. But for our students, their families and our whole community, because this isn't just limited to the schools. We're part of, you know, the at-large community here in Akron and Summit County. And if we don't handle this the right way, things could get a lot worse, you know, than, than get better. But thank you, Mrs. Mansfield, exactly, that pulled out that memory from that conversation on Friday.
Well, and it's perfect, right? Our, and people also are saying, well, our kids will fall behind. And it's like, um, Mr. Bravo and I talked earlier today and the, the answer is fall behind who? Everybody's in this situation. The whole world is in this situation. We're going to keep our kids at the top of, of that curve. But boy, oh, boy, we're, school, the way we knew it six months ago does not exist. So we are rewriting this narrative together and the better that we, the more we come together, the, they do it, the best.
Yeah.
Um, the, the better off we're going to be. Thank you. And Diana, perfect point too.
We could also just hold for one minute. I'm messaging Bruce. He appears to have dropped off just now. Um, I'd like to make sure that he has an opportunity to rejoin. If we can hold for just one moment. All right. He said he can hear us. His phone will not unmute at the moment, but he can hear us. So, uh, Lisa, did you have anything else before we turn it over back over to Dr. Hall? And Dr. Akbar also has some comments.
No, please back to them. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Okay, Valerie, since you haven't gone yet, why don't we go ahead and hear from Ms. McKittrick first?
Thank you. And thank everyone for your input. Um, of course, there is no easy choice to be made here. Of course, we're weighing several things, the health of our students, faculty, staff and all their families. Is our primary concern, but that doesn't minimize the economic impact on families. The instructional loss for students, the social emotional concerns we have. And so all of these things combined make for some sleepless nights. Um, but I keep going back to, in particular, one thing that Dr. McWilliams Wood said. And that is that 2,300 of our students have asthma. And that is more than 10% of our student population. And when I think of a virulent virus such as COVID-19. And that it affects mostly respiratory function. The idea of putting any of our kids, teachers, staff back in buildings right now. I think right now the risk is too great. And so the idea that perhaps we, as Ms. Shipe said, tap the brakes for now. I think for me is the best option. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. McKittrick, Dr. Hall.
Yeah, thanks, um, Mr. President. Um, so, you know, I think it was Dr. Seuss that once said, uh, sometimes the questions are complicated and the answers are simple. Uh, you know, certainly this is a scenario where we're dealing with some very complex questions, uh, you know, that COVID has presented all of us. But I think the answers are simple, you know, the more that we kind of just sit back, pause, take a deep breath and think about it. Um, you know, our priority as, as a board and as an administrative team. Is to forever and always place the health and safety of our students, teachers, staff, um, above, above all else. Um, that, that is why we exist, you know, um, boiled down to its most simplest form. We exist to ensure the health and safety, um, you know, of our students, staff, teachers and families. Uh, and so, so having said that, you know, some of the points that were made earlier around, you know, and, and parents that I've talked to. Have talked about students falling behind, you know, uh, the socialism, the lack of socialization, uh, food insecurity. How do we address that? Um, you know, of course, people that, you know, have jobs that they need to get to and their kids will have no childcare. Uh, and so, but again, you know, nothing I've, nothing, please don't consider anything I'm saying, you know, to make light of that. But at day's end, you know, um, our party has to be keeping these, our students, staff, you know, teachers and their families, healthy and safe. Um, you know, so when you, so when you think through the numbers, I think Ms. McKittrick referenced, you know, the number of students have asthma. When you sort of just make a cursory examination of the lethality rates as relates to COVID-19. Uh, it, it, it swings from anywhere from 0.5% to as high as 4%, depending upon where you're at. What country you're in, what part of this country you're in. So take, so let's go with the 0.5% for just a moment. You apply that to 20,000 students, 0.5% is a hundred students. So we're talking about a hundred students that we could potentially see that, that we could lose from COVID. But let's, but let's say it's only 0.1%. That's still 20 students. Apply the same logic to our staff. We have 4,500 staff. 0.5% would be 22 and a half or 23 staff members. 0.1 would still be five staff members. So as a, as a board member, I don't feel comfortable, you know, making any decision that's going to place anybody's life at risk. I think Ms. McKittrick said it very well, you know, um, you know, so, you know, this, this board is not in the business of making decisions. That are going to have a deleterious, um, impact on someone's life. Uh, and so, uh, so, so, so for those reasons, um, you know, I can't envision a scenario. Where I, as an individual board member, would be supportive of anything but remote learning to start the academic year. Um, I think Dr. James referenced cold and flu season. Well, that starts in September, October, you know, and that, and the flu presents just like COVID flu, you know. So how do you distinguish, you know, not to mention the other maladies, you know, that student staff, you can, you know, can be afflicted with. And we have no idea how COVID interacts with those other types of conditions, right? So, so again, you know, I, 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 I just want to say for the record that I would emphatically oppose, uh, any, any, any plan. That would involve back to school, uh, I'm sorry, in, in person learning, um, for at least, um, the first grading period. So, um, so that's, that's, that's how I feel about that. And so let me just move on and make a couple more quick comments. Um, you know, the online education, you know, um, I, you know, I was very grateful for the comments that Ms. Jezek made earlier in answering Dr. Akbar's questions. Because a lot of the concerns we got from parents about, uh, the online, with the basic, it felt like it was robust enough or rigorous enough. Uh, and so we've had a lot more time now to sort of, you know, work, really to work that out and to ensure that we have a more rigorous, robust online model. Our teachers have gotten a lot more practice, uh, with having to do it. So, um, so, so, so I feel, I feel much more confident about what we can offer there. Um, as it relates to, you know, bands, band athletics choir, you know, um, you won't be surprised to hear my, my comments on that being, I, I. It's not something I support either, um, right now. I mean, you know, we're, if we're going to go so far as to go to remote learning, you know, um, I just don't think, go, I think. We shouldn't go halfway, you know, we're, if we're in the business of protecting these students, you know, uh, we have to look closely at, um, limiting their contact in other ways as well. Which unfortunately would include, you know, band athletics, things like choir. Uh, I'm an advocate of all those things, you know, and so, um, you know, so, but again, you know, I think it's, but again, I just think that we're going halfway. If we don't closely examine those as well. Um, and then last but not least, um, you know, there may be folks who are on the line or that may play this back. And, and take a harsh opinion of, of some of the comments I made. Um, yeah, I just, I just want to say that, that, that my comments are, are calculated to achieve one thing. And that is the absolute health and safety of everybody that we work with and work for, uh, in this district. Um, and I think the challenge to this group, um, is to think about. In the absence of in-school learning, what are some other ways that we can be supporting and serving our community? Um, in addition to the remote, um, online learning. So, 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 so I think the outside the box way of looking at this is what other things can we think about? You know, can we, there's a really smart, there's a lot of really smart people on this line, a lot of really smart people who work, um, for this organization. Um, a lot of smart people in the community that we can continue to talk to and engage. Um, so I think now is a time for, to, you know, to, to continue to think about outside the box, you know, um. About how we can engage and support our community. So, uh, I know that was a bit long-winded. Uh, I, 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 I appreciate, uh, this group indulging my comments and I will see back the 40, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Uh, for those comments, I appreciate, uh, and may reference a few of those, uh, in my own comments. Dr. Akbar, you have also had some follow up?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to point out, um, Dr. Hall, I mentioned this as well. But, um, my comments around athletics as well as, um, Dr. James mentioned, um, music and art and other, um, extracurricular activities. And, um, fine arts type programs, um, that require, um, a little bit more, um, than just learning from a book. And that will require them to get together and to do, um, activities or even, you know, utilize, um, instruments. Um, and all of those things. I, I, I think that that part of my concern also extends to field trips. I know, um, Rachel Teka mentioned that, uh, in her comments. But I think that if we're, if, if we're going to be, um, responsible. And, uh, say that we're going to, uh, do a hundred percent, uh, remote. Even if we get to a point where, um, there is a chance to do blended learning. Um, we, yeah, without a cure, um, or a vaccine for COVID-19. I think that it, you know, we all should be very mindful about the trips that we take. And as a district, we should also be mindful about any trips that we, we sponsor and support. And I think that, um, that's another area where, uh, we may need to take a longer than, uh, we want to pause. Um, to protect all those involved. Um, the other thing that I think, uh, we, we, we kind of, uh, got into a point where I think that it's kind of sounded very doom and gloom. But I want to, uh, bring it back to a little upbeat, um, and the silver lining of it all, right? I was talking to Dr. James this morning and Patrick and Ryan, uh, this morning. And it just, it dawned on me that we have an opportunity to be transformative. We have an opportunity to be creative. We have the opportunity, uh, to be, uh, more dynamic than we've ever been. We have an opportunity to create an educational experience, um, that is digitally, uh, innovative and accessible. As well as, um, uh, transformative, basically that's the word I'm using. And so, uh, you know, we can use our staff, we can use our buildings, uh, and our technology differently. As well as create additional, uh, outlets. So one of the things that I talked to Dr. James about this morning, and this is just one idea. You know, how do we provide more, uh, support differently to our students, um, than we are providing now? So, uh, how do we provide on-demand, uh, digitally accessible support, uh, for students who are needing support with their homework? Uh, so online tutoring or assess, uh, accessibility things of that nature. Um, I, I think that that's what this moment calls for. I think that's what it brings out. It brings us to a moment where we can totally rethink and shift the paradigm of education in Akron. And, and really go beyond 21st century, but begin thinking about 22nd century education. And we can start that now, uh, right here in Akron, uh, with this pandemic. Uh, unfortunately, it, it led us to, uh, have to think differently, but let's look at the bright side. Maybe this is what we needed, uh, not necessarily the deaths, not necessarily the lack in education. But maybe this is what we needed to just totally rethink and transform our educational experiences. So that we can get way better outcomes, not that we're not getting good ones now, but we can get even better outcomes for our students. And so that's what I just want to say. I'm, I'm excited about what the future holds as we think about being dynamic, creative and transformative.
Thank you so much, Dr. Akbar. Are there any other questions or comments this time? If not, I want to say thank you again to our superintendent, the assistant superintendent, our treasurer, all of their staff. I want to say thank you to Pat Shipe and Michael Householder from A E A. To our other bargaining units, um, for their support and for giving us the feedback that we need to hear. To be able to make the kinds of decisions that we need to make. None of us, uh, take lightly the decisions that I think we need to make within the coming weeks. I think you've heard from our board members, um, and our staff, the, the, the level that we're going to, to try and make the best decision that we can. And again, we'll stress that whatever decision we make, it kind of feels like it's one of those moments where no answer is going to be the absolute right answer. And as you've heard from some of the data, both from A E A and from the, 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 uh, survey that was done with our own parents. The community is fairly split down the middle. It seems that you have about, as the superintendent said before, uh, in another conversation, about 40% of the community. Uh, would like to see us send our kids back to school, another 40% would like to see us go virtual. And there are probably about 20% who haven't made up their minds yet. Uh, and no decision is going to be the right decision. We're not going to please a hundred percent of the people with a hundred percent of the plan. But we're going to try and make the best one that we can. Um, I love the comments that Dr. Akbar made. This is a time for us to be innovative and creative. Um, this is a time for us to be able to, uh, take what we have and make, uh, lemonade out of lemons, if you will. Uh, we have a real opportunity here to be creative and innovative. And I know we've even spoken about, uh, connected learning 2.0. Uh, and we spent a lot of our time and effort talking about a blended option. And as someone mentioned before, it's not necessarily that that blended option is not an option that we're going to choose. But it may be an option that we're not going to choose today. And if so, that's okay, right? So we'll choose an option that fits us for the moment, knowing that we can still head to a blended option or to a fully in-person. Uh, environment in the future as, as the situation betters itself. Uh, but for now, we need, we do need to make the best decision we have with the information we have on hand. But it is a time for us to be innovative and creative, to look at how we're going to utilize CARES Act funding. Uh, to be responsible with, uh, the dollars that we do have. Um, and be mindful of the fact that we're at the end of a levy cycle and we do still need to. Uh, if we can't change the revenue side of the equation, then we certainly have to look at the expense side of the equation. And so there's a lot going on here and the community should know that we're being as responsible as we can and as proactive as we can. And as thoughtful and deliberate as we can. Um, so I love the comments about innovating. I love the comments about, uh, being creative. And 22nd, uh, century education and what things look like in the future. Those are just a few of my comments. Um, please know that we're thinking about all of you, our, our children and our families. We're thinking about our staff. Uh, we want to incorporate all of your voices, um, our teachers, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers. We appreciate you so much and we know that you're being patient with us. Uh, so thank you for that. Are there any final comments, questions, uh, or thoughts that anyone would like to share? Before we wrap up this presentation and this discussion. Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Superintendent, uh, Mr. Treasurer, are there any other, uh, is there any other information to come before this board?
Not this evening.
No, thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, then we will take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Ms. McKittrick, a second by Mr. Alexander. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you so much. This meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education is adjourned.
Stay well, everyone.
You too, everyone.
All right.